At the moment, it's a complete mess and if you want to try and work out how you get from your actual house in a rural area to a library or to a school, it's absolutely impossible. And we need to actually make it possible for people to do all of those things easily.
Henry, we should now take more questions from the floor, so if you have a question, please raise your hand and hopefully the mic is going to come and find you. There's one question here, yeah, back.
I'm Kevin Power. I want to ask a question of the candidates about the policy towards citing solar panel power stations. And why this seems to be so easy to have planning permissions looked at by local district councils. Rather than Kent apparently having a policy whereby any solar power stations, we'll call them, are cited on brownfield sites. Particularly, I'm thinking of the disused coal Particularly, I'm thinking of the disused coal powered stations on the Isle of Grain, and the possibility to shut down the organic fired power station in Sandwich, which seems to be a contradiction in terms. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the questions answered in reverse, alphabetical order, starting with Henry?
The point about solar panel citing is quite an interesting one for the Green Party in particular, because obviously we are ardent fans of nature, but also recognise the incredible urgency of trying to decarbonise our electricity system. And it's not always straightforward, but I do agree obviously that those sites that you've suggested, sir, seem like a very sensible place to put solar panels. I would go further and say that in actual fact, to get enough electricity for all of the UK's needs, would only require us to put solar panels on the golf courses of the country. That's it. Now, that's not going to work for everyone, obviously. There will be a small minority of very angry white men. However, it illustrates the fact that we don't need to plaster the entire country with solar panels, which I know is something that annoys people. However, we do need to decarbonise. So there are some tough choices that have to be made, but as much as possible, I completely agree, we need to put them on brownfield sites, places where we do the least damage to our already very denuded nature.
For me, I mean, I think people would like obviously solar panels on their own houses. I think it should be across on businesses, I think it should be on houses, and people pay to have them on houses, rather than brownfield sites. I think we've got worries that farming land is being used to, you know, debatable if it's going to be used for housing in some areas. We've got massive sites of some solar panels, I think they're focussed on where, you know, it's farming land. We don't want solar panels on massive big sites. It's the Garden of England, we should be as nature, it should be for the use of Kent. And I think we should be putting it on people's homes, rather than our bills are going up, up, up. They should spend the money and actually invest in housing and do it, you know, properly where they actually for residents will gain, it should be on businesses. So it's the least inconvenience, rather than taking up massive plots and sites, we should be using nuclear power stations, obviously with Dungeness. We should be small modulator reactors that can already, you know, as Rolls Royce, to have a mixture of fuel. We're under the guise of wind power, which doesn't always deliver, with obviously solar panels and solar power. But we're paying, National Grid is paying companies a billion pound at the moment, which will go up to nine billion, to turn power off because they haven't got the storage for the power that could go to actually to residents, to businesses. So you're paying for green policies that don't deliver, and for me, it needs to be common sense and not actually ripping off the customer.
Thank you for the question. Yes, so why do, why do we want solar power? I mean, just to be absolutely clear, it's cleaner energy, it's cheaper energy, and frankly, it makes us less dependent on Putin's gas. And that is, that is also not to be underestimated as a name. And Kent Conservatives running the council, we have a council policy to promote renewable energy. We put solar panels across our own estate, but we also are helping residents put solar panels on their roofs, because the first place we must look should be, if you like, brownfield sites and people's roofs, rather than the green fields of Kent. And Solar Together is the scheme that we do, so we provide lower cost, centrally organised solar panels, which any, anyone here could take advantage of. We've run four or five rounds of Solar Together, and I recommend you have a look at that. Through that, Kent has helped thousands of people put solar panels on their roofs. And finally, we've also supported the community energy sector. So I have an interest, I am a volunteer in a local community energy organisation. We're helping put solar panels on the roofs of doctor's surgeries and charities, buildings, village halls, schools, they have huge roofs that can generate more renewables. And Kent does have, we have invested in a community energy team at Kent County Council. So those are the things that the Conservatives are doing locally to promote the uptake of solar.
Thank you for your question. I think the question demonstrates how, the lack of visibility, what KCC is doing throughout Kent to promote any of these projects and policies. Within the alternative budget, again, we were able to cast an environmental team, and that environmental team would look at every single area that have, to tackle the climate crisis and biodiversity crisis, to then go to central government to see if we can get additional funding to tackle all of these environmental issues, not just seeing a single issue in isolation, but going further. councillor Watkins mentioned Solar Together, put your hands up if you've been involved in that. No hands are going up, which definitely means, or one or two, definitely means that visibility is low, more needs to be done. So it's all well and good saying that things are being, being done at the moment, but it isn't, it isn't good enough. We need to bolster these teams, roll this out further, and improve clean energy, the solar, solar energy. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking last on this, obviously everybody said lots of stuff already, but I think you hit the nail on the head when you were talking about planning, and actually, a lot of these solar farms go through the normal planning process, and there isn't actually any planning or strategy at a much higher level. And the issue is that there's, there's, there's a live application in my patch between Tylerhill and Chessfield at the moment, and that's going to be built on farmland. There is a promise that that farmland will be returned back to farmland in 40 years' time. Will we still, will we still be growing food in 40 years' time and still have the ability to do it? But at the same time that renewable energy is going to give us some independence from the international energy market, we're using farmland, which is removing our food security as well. We can't keep trading the two off together. There isn't enough strategy in the area to work out what Kent's need is for renewable energy and work out, as you've already mentioned some sites this evening, where we should put that and how we should work together, rather than relying on private landowners coming forward and putting a site forward for solar, so it's a bit of a piecemeal thing. You're absolutely right, we need a much, much more joined up approach across the county to work out what the need is and find those suitable sites and have a workable renewable strategy.
Thank you. So we'll now take another question from the floor.
Hiya. Hello. I'm Guy Mayhew, and my question to you is, proposed local government reorganisation means that the county council you are standing for is expected to be abolished in the next two to three years. If elected, your role will not just be to represent residents now, but to help ensure that our priorities are protected as powers transferred to a new authority. Given the distinct needs across the district, from world heritage status and heritage management in Canterbury, to coastal infrastructure in Whitstable and Huron Bay, and connectivity and service access in our rural areas, what specific steps will you and your party take to, one, understand local needs and priorities, and two, ensure that these place-based priorities are not diluted or lost in the proposed transition? Thank you.
Thank you. If you could start answering the question again, regarding part two, alphabetical order. Alex?
Thank you, Guy. I might have known that would come from you as well. So for those who aren't across the whole thing, there is the likelihood that we're going to be under a unitary authority, either four or three unitary authorities and a mayor of Kent within the next two to three years. There are pluses and minuses, I'm not a big fan of mayors in general, because, you know, they're a little bit like monarchs, and if you get a good one, everything's fine, but if you get a bad one, I think it could be absolutely terrible. And there are probably some people in some parts of the country who could tell you that. What, your point is absolutely right, and on Canterbury City Council where I am at the moment, a lot of our focus is on legacy. What do we do when that level of local government that's, that's at present goes? We're helping and working with parish councils, who will be the closest level of government to people, to make sure that they can still have residents' views reflected. We're all standing in county divisions, it's likely that with a unitary authority, a patch that currently in my area has seven city councillors and one county councillor, will be represented by two unitary councillors, that's going to be really difficult to hear residents' views. We need to make sure those unparished areas in the district where a lot of those heritage assets are are protected. Not sure we're ready for another Whitstable Town Council debate at the moment, but that's something that we want to make sure happens as the unitary authority goes. I'm very, very concerned that the link between residents and their local level of government isn't lost as part of that unitary, and that's something I'll be working every day to make sure that we can protect. Thank you.
Thank you for your question. I'd like to start by saying that within KCC, there was a vote in the council to move forward on devolution. That came from the Conservative administration, they would move forward on devolution and cancel these elections. Other parties, including my own party, voted against that. We wanted to prioritise local government reorganisation and have these elections, and that's what we're having at the moment. You're completely right, there is a fear when we're looking at behind closed doors carving up of Kent, which it shouldn't happen, losing community identity. And that's why I've been saying to the administration that you need to engage with residents, parish and town councils, to find out what you would like to see, where you would like to see the services delivered, and how they should be delivered, because that's the point. The point of local government reorganisation is to make service delivery more efficient. How that, how is that going to help you? And if it's just going to be white men behind closed doors, not explaining this is going to be making your lives better, making service delivery better, then there is a real problem. And I'm a Labour and Co-operative councillor, so community is in my roots, and valuing the community is incredibly important, so I can continue to champion that throughout all these conversations.
Thanks, Asher. I will stand up, as I've been blocking myself out from these tables through the, through the rostrum there. But yeah, this is, this is the million dollar question, really. And I think many of us actually on this panel probably support local government reform. So it is a case that sometimes turkeys do vote for Christmas, because you would be electing us, and if, if it goes that way, it means we would be abolishing Kent County Council in a few years' time. But if it's the right thing for people, then, then we should do it. And we shouldn't be beholden to previous forms of local government that existed, we should do the right thing by, by local residents. In terms of how do we listen to the public's needs, Guy, I mean, I think the key thing there is public consultation. Both the, you know, the county council, Medway council, district councils, I believe they'll all be having public consultations over the summer, to listen to what people want. What do you expect from your local council? I happen to think that just as it's a terrible way to run a business, to split it in two, put in two different leadership teams, and then say, go and coordinate all these complex services for people, thank you very much, I think it's a bad idea to run a council split between a county and then also a district council, and then sometimes also a parish council. I think we will benefit from unifying, but it must be done in a way that people want it to be done. And a final point I would make is, in order to keep that local link, we need devolution of powers downwards into the lower organisations, so that people don't feel more distant from a new unitary authority, but actually they see some services have become closer.
Thank you, Dan.
The last reorganisation of local government was 50 years ago, that was imposed, as most of the changes are imposed, you weren't given a choice, a referendum, we will offer a referendum, there needs to be a decision of the choices of what people, this is what it will mean. So you need to have an option A, B, C, D, and a full engagement of actually what the changes mean. Cornwall is, is the last one that went across to unitary status, has now run up a debt twice the size of Kent for half the population of Kent. So these councils and reorganising doesn't save money, it doesn't make the services better, actually many of these councils are practically bankrupt. There needs to be engagement with communities and businesses to think, look, what is the best for Kent? It may not be the best for what happens in another county, but this has been imposed in, you're not getting the decision. So I can't tell you, all 14 councils, that's the 12 districts, Medway, Kent, will all go, we don't know the make up of structure, what the next stage will be. This is a rush job to get done by the end of this parliament, and, you know, we want a strong vote, and obviously in Kent, to say, look, we want to take on the local government challenges with Angela Rayner, because she doesn't really seem to understand, and the Labour government does seem to understand, what actually local government means. We're going to end up with debt, we'll end up with the services and the funding not there, and that's not fair to all residents or council tax, and many of you are not paying it yet, but when you do, it's going to be sky high for less services, and that's not really any good enough.
It's a pretty arcane topic, this reorganisation. So for us in the Green Party, what we will carry on doing is what we've been doing all along, which is working really hard, listening to the residents of whatever electoral district we are given, and making sure that we actually do the nitty gritty that residents want us to do. And that's why we are the fastest growing and most, electorally most successful party in the UK at the moment.
One more to spare. We will now take another question from our local schools. We have two students, George and Keblin, and Susan Haas.
Oh, is, yeah, okay. Following the Supreme Court ruling on the 2010 Equality Act.
How will candidates ensure that trans people, and especially trans youth such as myself, can continue to live our lives with dignity, privacy and safety?
Have the question answered in reverse, alphabetical order, starting with Henry Stanton.
I'm so sorry for the recent Supreme Court decision, because I don't think it's actually helped anything at all, it's made things much worse for trans people. And to watch the crowing about it, the celebrating about this, it has been pretty sickening, really. It hasn't offered clarity, people claim. How is a trans person, let's say a trans woman who has been living as a trans woman for 30 years, supposed to now go to the toilet, in a men's toilet, having always gone to a women's toilet? There's no clarity in that at all, there's just cruelty. And I'm personally appalled that we are seeing so much of our press and media and commentators delighting, and even our politicians unfortunately, delighting in this decision. I don't deny that women need to be protected. There's a statistic I read today, which was that 97% of 18 to 24 year old women have been sexually assaulted. There's no question that we have got to address the massive issue we have with violence against women, but there is so much violence against the trans population as well. These are not populations that should be divided, they are populations that should be looking out for each other. And I think that's where we all need to think for a moment and start thinking about how we protect these people, not how we vilify them.
Myself, I'm a gay man, I understand, I have many friends of, and many persuasions, but the main crux is, we need to make sure there's a proper toilet provision for everyone. We're going back to early nineties, John Major took away the provision for local government to provide toilet services, so they disappeared. Everyone needs to be protected, we have, women need to have their own spaces, that's a basic right. Trans people need to have a space if they feel they want to be in a unisex toilet or an adequate other facility. We really need to look at personal circumstances, whether it's gym, toilets in shops, bigger areas, but obviously some of the businesses don't have the facilities to just have another option, so we need to look and have the conversation in a polite, respectful manner, to look across that everyone has a provision that suits them, not to feel they're excluded, but we can't take rights from one to then take rights off another one. That's not the way we engage, we should talk sensibly, carefully, what we can do to... So everyone in society has a fair chance to feel safe, to feel like they're in a place that they feel they want to be in, and not feel that they're being targeted or feel threatened. So we've got to look at what we can do for toilet facilities, and I think that's a grown-up conversation. But I think obviously as a national government, they need to bring in the law back, that actually local government must provide local toilet services, because there's not many around, and obviously we don't have the choices for people to choose however they wish to go.
Yeah, so actually firstly to my panelists thus far, you know, I think, I think it's good that we're conducting this discussion in a, in a very sort of open and inclusive way, because too much of the national debate actually... in a very sort of open and inclusive way because too much of the national debate actually does get very polarised, which is saddening. But I think first thing just to say is actually Kent County Council runs very, very few kind of public toilets. That's done at district level. So it's not, this is not a discourse we often have at that council. Nonetheless, it's very important and indeed in a world in which we might become a unitary council, then it would become a core part of our service. I suppose the debate in some ways you could summarise is on the one hand, there's the argument for equality. Why shouldn't a trans person have equal rights in all respects as someone who is a biological man, biological woman? Versus sometimes fairness. If you take the case of sport and elite sport, is it fair to a female runner if a trans female runner has that physical advantage? It's really hard to trade off equality with fairness. And that's why I like to see a debate conducted in good spirit. And I think as actually the Conservative leader said yesterday, although the Supreme Court has made this judgement and we will have to follow it as local authorities, whatever type of authority, we can still do a lot for the trans community, to support them, make sure they still feel included.
Thank you so much for your question. I'm a white, middle-aged heterosexual man and I understand the privileges that I get in this society. So I'm not going to wade in with outrageous statements. I understand that the concerns within the trans community. I'm hoping that both sides of this debate can continue to communicate over this topic with respect, empathy and compassion, because that's what's needed. A conversation with feeling and heart and understanding the other person's point of view. And I'm hoping that we can move forward and be able to have that honest, real compassionate conversation.
Thank you. And thank you very much. And it's a shame that you still have to ask that question in 2025. I'll begin by saying trans rights are human rights and women's rights are human rights. And when you try and trade off rights against each other, there are no winners. And I think that's what the debate has shown over the last few years. And it is a very recent and aggressive debate that sprung up and been stirred up by some people who have the interests not of trans women or men or not of women at their heart. They have the interests of division at heart. And I think as Henry said, these are groups that should not be fighting each other. These are groups that should be building each other up. I hope that we can move forward and that you and other trans people aren't feeling as threatened and as scared to go about their lives and living their truth as they should be able to do in society, as everyone else has the right to do. I hope that the victory celebrations, as Henry said, won't be too far. I hope that we can get some clarity on this debate, that we can get to the point of what's behind this, which is not toilet provision. It is male violence against women and violence against trans people. These are the issues we should be discussing and these are the issues we should be celebrating an end to.
We will now take another question from the floor before going to the second segment. Is there any hand? Oh, yep, yep, over there. Put the lights in front of me so I can see you very well.
My name's John Riley. I've got a two-part question. It's about the same topic. There's a huge social housing need throughout the country and particularly in Kent. And I'd like to hear how the parties want to address the social housing need in this area. But coupled with that, we quite rightly have an obligation, both as people and under international law, to refugees. And many of them come here and are not in good housing. So I would like a broader view on the social housing for people in the area and for refugees and ensuring that this is of a good quality.
Thank you. Should answer the question in reverse alphabetical order, starting from Henry.
I think it's quite important to note that social housing is something that is normally provided by the district council rather than by Kent County Council. However, it is clearly so needed in Kent. You can see in Canterbury just by walking around the High Street or looking along the Ring Road at the sort of tent city that's developing there, that there is a homelessness crisis that desperately needs to be addressed. And I will therefore say quickly that although it's something that has to be addressed at the district council level, the housing provision that the Green Party would look to make would be of the right type of housing in the right place at the right price. And that includes significant social housing in order to cover that. At the moment, what is in the draft local plan, as provided by the Liberal and Labour local council, does not include sufficient of any of that type of housing. So we would say very clearly that that is something that needs to be changed. In terms of accommodation for refugees, unfortunately, the whole debate at the moment is frankly pretty disgusting because to see the pictures of people coming across on small boats and then find that we are condemning them rather than feeling sympathy to them is really, really unpleasant. But absolutely, I would agree that the Green Party would go ahead and produce more and better refugee accommodation for those refugees.
Housing provision, I'll answer in two parts. Obviously, it's, at the moment, it's for local district council, that being sort of Canterbury City Council. When it comes to unitary status, obviously we're looking in a few years' time. We want to have a plan and what the legal allowances were allowed because obviously depending what we're given from central government on a unitary status. So that's something we can't do yet until we know what we're allowed to have or campaign for. But people need provision and obviously there's still some of the developments we've got in Chessfield and Bleam. They don't want, they're on, they're going to be on farming land, they're going to be on areas where it just doesn't make logical sense. So we've got to look at different pockets. And there are available places around Kent, around Canterbury. But the developers don't want to go there. They want the nice sites. They want the kind of ones we can sell for millions of pounds. So there's got to be a change in the law for that. There's going to be a change in the provision, obviously where council house sales, the money is still kept and it's not allowed to go back in. Obviously, that's going back to Thatcher days. So, you know, it was a good thing that housing got better for those people that wish to. But we need to make a change on that. Regarding with refugees, we have people, and it's a fairness across the system. It's not one against another, but we've got people in our own country here. And I've visited mould on walls. This is in council properties, private properties. They're living in absolute squalor. It's just vile illness. And we've seen enough with children dying around the countries and families suffering from spores, from mould. There's got to be a better structure for housing and it has to come from central government as well.
Yep, housing, definitely, you know, one of those top 10 topics that all councils are thinking about all the time and it's not easy. I would say just at Kent County Council level, we do convene the Kent Housing Group, which is the housing department essentially of all of the 13 district councils, as well as the voluntary sector as well. They come together and they try and tackle some of these knotty issues. Ultimately, their goal is to make sure the social housing that does get built in Kent is good quality, energy efficient kind of places we all want to live in regardless of our income. I think the elephant in the room on this point really is central government. We, as local planning authorities, have been stripped of our powers increasingly over time. We have to hit a government housing target. We've got a new Labour government that came in nine months ago. They increased housing targets in rural areas and reduced it in cities. I actually think that was the wrong way round because you can have a more sort of sustainable housing solution in cities rather than again building on the sort of greenfields of Kent as much. The one upside though is with more housing being built in Kent, 10% of that or so will be social housing. And of course, that will mean more social housing units will come in. But fundamentally, central government sets the rules and we're really doing their bidding.
I'm going to stand up. It's like the worst boy band ever. So social housing, as been mentioned, it's the planning authority which are districts. And the Canterbury City Council, Labour-run, have done more and have plans for more social housing than the Conservatives did in 10 years. We're reaching up to near 100. I know that's not good enough. It's a drop in the ocean and we're looking to go further. Again, I'm going to mention the alternative budget. We've worked on it for four years. So I'm going to try and put a shoehorn into every single conversation. KCC invests about £180 million on the stock market, money market funds. Now, there's a thing called No Home's Empty, where a derelict building can get funding to be turned into a home. We would put more money into that scheme and not gamble it on the money market funds. We would also look to increase local jobs, which will put more money in people's pockets, which then can get in front of the housing crisis. So Kent locally are doing more. Canterbury Council are doing more than the Tories did previously. And we would continue to do that. Thank you. Refugees, when people.
Time's up.
Eating into my time there as well. Our planning system is broken. It's a well-known fact. And it's already been mentioned. We get central government targets to build houses and we rely on private developers to build those houses. And what we get is the houses that developers desire, not the houses that residents need. It needs a massive reorganisation. And unfortunately, I think it's slightly above my pay grade to do that. But it is something that we need to really address. And as Alistair said, I've been proud to be part of buying some social housing off plan from one of the developments that's happened in Canterbury recently. There's some fantastic new ideas to how we can increase that social housing provision, but it's not enough. In terms of refugees, we want to set up a Kent-wide and then hopefully a national-wide system for helping particularly unaccompanied child migrants, but all migrants, to find housing and jobs and solutions across the country. At the moment, Kent and East Kent in particular, does have to deal with a lot of the financial burden, which means it's not a great outcome for us in Kent and it's not a great outcome for those refugees who don't have the support and facilities that they need. So a lot more can be done. A lot of it is at the feet of the government in Westminster. And all we can do is just keep being noisy and keep causing trouble and keep shouting about it until they actually sort it out. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll now move to the next segment. We will answer the question. Yeah, yeah, so great. So let's count there. Next segment, that means the clock will be set at 30 seconds. We'll take a question from the floor again. So we're going to go here.
Hello. It's just on the solar panels you was talking about, going back to that subject. Favisham, they had all the solar panels put up there. When they got planning for that, that was to supply houses. But now it's been stopped and revoked and it now supplies the petrol stations and supermarkets. So from the beginning, the planning was already, yeah, you can have it, you can have all them solar panels, it's doing all the houses. But in the end of it, it wasn't. What can you do about that? I know that's down to planning. But I think what it shows is, no matter what you say, what you do, what gets through and what you get at the end of it, it doesn't happen. And I know that because I'm quite a big campaigner with housing developments and a lot of stuff. So I do a lot of, I'm quite educated in a lot of this different stuff. With the housing, they say, oh, you get a big development. We do 220 houses.
We can.
In the end, it comes with 440 houses. But that's what I'm just saying. All I'm saying is, what you get at the beginning and what you get at the end is not what you get. What are you going to do about that?
Thank you.
30 seconds, eh? Takes me that long to stand up? No, you're absolutely right. And we get, we absolutely in local government, we have to deal with this all the time. All we can do as local representatives is to try and amplify your voice when you see those problems and we speak to residents and we see that. I know about that solar farming. Favisham, there was a huge issue in terms of the battery storage around that. What I can do about it is not nearly as much as I want to do about it, is the simple answer. But what we can keep doing is the answer remains the same, is listen to residents and cause trouble. Thank you.
Alistair.
It's about enforcement. Again, this is district council planning authority. So Kent County councillors cannot do much apart from lobby districts to look to make sure that the enforcement is in the right place. We can speak to districts on that. But Kent County councillors, if they say that they can do a lot on planning, they can't do a lot on planning. They're lying to you. So we would speak to districts and see what they can do.
Well, yeah, I agree with the premise of what you said. And as I said before, you know, planning is largely centralised and we are implementing the government's bidding. But there is maybe one area where we do have quite a lot of choice and that's the local plan, where we set out development for the next 20, 30 years for the district. And there you do get differences. I haven't got long to say, but, you know, in the case of Liberals and Labour locally, they want that new town in the Bleam, 2,000 homes. The Conservative local plan before didn't have that in. So there are choices to be made. It's just that most of the choices are driven by government.
The councils need to be tougher. They're too namby-pamby. They're too weak. They allow businesses and companies to just override local decisions. They need to be sued. They need to have other plans in the pipeline blocked so they will never be able to operate in Kent again. They need to be tougher. And they know that the councils to just roll over and the planning department are just too weak or it's cap in hand. They need to be tougher and brutal.
Yeah, it's no surprise that the property developers are able to do what they like. They've made donations to both the Labour Party and the Conservative Party locally. That's Mark Quinn, the local developer you'll know well. And so what are we going to expect if we have that party campaign funding system where people with money and vested interests are able to make their views known where the local residents actually aren't? So it's definitely a problem that we have with the way our local democracy works. And I completely agree. It's incredibly frustrating.
Thank you. We'll now take a question from our students again. Jude.
So, I am Jude. What would you do to protect people's jobs from AI? What specific policies would you implement to make sure that their jobs are protected?
30 seconds. That's a very good question. We'll start with reverse alphabetical order.
Well, I am a software engineer and I did my master's dissertation on AI. And I don't really have an answer for you on that one. I think it's something to be worried about. Godness, no question. I don't know what my three young children are going to do. So far, I've come up with one of them should be a magician because I don't think we want to see a robot magician. But this is one of those pieces of technology that's going to be generationally changing and we need to start addressing it from the central government right now in a very profound way.
It has to be national government, but also we've got to protect people's, if you're a musician, you're an artist. The government at the moment are going to give the rights away to AI and companies, so you won't get any money at all. If you've invented something, the rights should be protected for your lifetime, not given away willy-nilly to massive, you know, corporations, whether it's in China, whether it's Americas, that's generally from there. There needs to be legislation here and actually be tough and do it, not just agree with another country. You need to stand up for your own people and you legislate. And if they don't do, they don't operate here.
Very, very good question there. I would say that in fact, although AI needs to be regulated, it actually brings huge opportunity for economic growth, better jobs and incomes and better public services for everyone. And if we protect jobs, we essentially stop AI in its track. The whole funding model for AI, like every other technology that has ever come to the world, is based on making savings elsewhere. So it's more about retraining people whose jobs get displaced so they get a new job elsewhere rather than stopping AI from getting involved in that sector.
Thank you, Dan.
I'll start by again saying that there are many advantages for AI, but we would, the Labour Party would work with unions to protect jobs. That's the point of a union, you join a union, they protect your terms and conditions and they fight for workers' rights. So we would work with unions to protect jobs from AI and encroaching on taking jobs away from people.
Thank you. I think the core to this protection is that we give a huge amount of data away to various companies and a lot of that is going to fuel AI. And where that data sits and who controls it is the key. That needs to be controlled by us as individuals so we know who's got the permission to use it, not controlled by large corporations who will use that how they see fit. So I would really be looking at empowering citizens to have control over their data, how it's used, where it's given, and that again is probably a central government answer, but that's where the key is for me in data.
Keep mindful of the time, so we'll now move to the concluding statements from each candidate. We will do it in reverse alphabetical order, we'll set the clock at one minute and we will start with Henry. Are you comfortable?
This debate has shown, I think, the importance of trying to re-energise our democratic system. A lot of the questions we've had here tonight have been about the frustrations that are coming from our existing fossilised democracy. And it's the Green Party that brings the energy, the ideas and the hard work that is required to actually start trying to get this democracy, particularly in Kent, back on its feet, alive, energetic and actually delivering for the residents of Kent. So if you want a county which is actually delivering for voters on the things that voters actually want, a place which is a good place to live, a good place to work, a good place to bring up your children, then you should vote Green. Thank you.
Reform UK is the biggest and fastest current political party and it's not for a few reasons. People have been disaffected by Labour and Tories which have held the same governments through such and such a long time and failing. We have debt, we have failures in NHS, policies, housing, there is not a good area that you can say, this is fantastic. Normal, good people are now fed up. Things are not better, they're not improving, you're paying more taxes, you're getting less for it. People want to change and they don't want the same policies that the two sides seem to be bickering over each time. You need a fresh look, you need a fresh change actually to bring people and listen to them, not talk at them, talk down at them, you need to engage, we're living in a different world which is changing. But common sense, respect are values that always will remain and should remain for the future. You need to be involved, you need to be engaged, you need to vote for change and not just do for the cult things of what your grandmother did in the past. Things have changed now, the world is a different place and you need to vote and change for it.
Yeah, so I mean firstly, just speaking for Herne Bay, I would like to thank very much, I am visible, hard-working councillor, I can show that with the improvement projects running the town, whether it be train station, the library upgrade, the park or others. So yeah, I hope if you're a Herne Bay voter, you will support me. But I think sort of taking a step back and looking at a Kent level, I come back to my central point before, yeah, we have got lots of great services, we've discussed them at length today, the Kent County Council's providing. We have made lots of tough decisions as the Kent Conservatives to keep the council solvent and to not go bust, like many councils across the country. All that is at risk if you pick unelected or, sorry, inexperienced councils or a party that doesn't have the same track record as the local Conservatives in making those difficult, difficult decisions as we've gone through the pandemic, as we've gone through the cost of living crisis. So we want to carry on delivering those great frontline services. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions this evening. I had hoped I would have heard from all the candidates how they are going to be fixing the problems, the very real problems that we have in Kent, and I haven't heard tangible alternatives, ways to fix a problem and how to cost it. And the Kent Labour Group for the last four years have put together alternative budgets with KCC officers, so from day one, we can implement some of these proposals. So if you're able to look at our leaflets, go online and look at these credible alternatives to what the Conservatives have been doing for the last 27 years, then vote for a Labour councillor, because we are embedded in communities, we've worked incredibly hard and we want to continue doing that.
I thank you very much for your time this evening. There are a couple of things we didn't get a chance to talk about, we talked about buses, thank you very much for that, but I think we can get better primary care outcomes in Kent. I think we can use technology to free up GP appointments that are much needed. I think we can increase NHS accountability by using Kent's place on the integrated care board. I also think that we can do a lot more to help our carers in Kent by helping them access funds that are there, that the KCC isn't helping them to access at the moment, those personal care budgets. But I want to go back to that point about good councillors who will represent your views and I think coming here and listening tonight, I've worked with most of the people on the stage here tonight at one point or another for the best of our residents. I know that they all have the core issues of their residents at their heart and also Dirk, welcome to Canterbury, it's good that you're getting to know the area. I want a better KCC and a fairer Kent and I hope you do too. So when it comes time to tick that box next week, I hope you'll put it next to my name. Thank you.
Thank you. Please join me in applauding our candidates once again. Also by way of polling, has the event changed the way in which you intend to cast your vote? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, well, I hope at least you found it informative. Thank you for joining us, I hope you found this interesting and informative, at least you now have a better idea about the way in which you intend to vote. Have a great evening. A massive thank you to all our partners, also the students who have joined us tonight. Again, democracy in action and we'll see you here for the next one. Have a great evening and thank you.